I know many of you know Ernie personally, know his family. Our hearts go out to Mrs. Howtichelle, to both of their boys, and their family, and all of their friends who will miss Ernie. I've worked with Ernie closely for almost 20 years now, as he's taken good care of the clients that I've taken in probate matters to Randall County. And I always use two words to describe Ernie Howtichelle: common sense, but you could also add compassion to that. And I saw that as he interacted with my clients and always took good care of us. So we'll just take a moment, counsel, starting right now, and pause to honor Judge Ernie Howtichelle.
Further honor the judge.
Mayor, I think there's some interference. I'm having a hard time hearing you, and I don't know if everyone else is as well. And I thought that was some important stuff, so I wanted to see if you could fire it off again.
Well, and it was also, I was having trouble with Howard, so it may not be just the mayor's feed. It may be something in our connection this morning. Howard was cutting in and out as well for me.
Jared, I'm going to sign off. Let's recess for just a minute. Howard, if you don't mind signing off and coming back too, and let's see if that fixes it. Stephanie, how's that audio now? Is there feedback coming through?
Sounds clear. I'm not hearing feedback.
Howard, do you mind testing your microphone, please?
Testing three, four, five, six.
That sounds good, I think. Stephanie, how did Howard sound to you?
He sounded good, mayor.
Okay. So as I was just saying, that I had requested the city manager to fly the city flags that have staff in honor of Judge Ernie Howtichelle. Mr. City Manager, can you give us a report on where we stand on executing that request?
We're blowing the flags as we speak. That's happening right now. It's probably already done here at City Hall and at most of our other facilities, but it'll certainly be done before the end of the meeting. Also, city attorney is drafting the proclamation for your signature later today.
And our hearts, our prayers, and our concern go out to, of course, the Howtichelle family, but certainly also the rest of the county commission and all the citizens of Randall County, as we want to honor Judge Howtichelle, and we will all miss his leadership, but just miss his person. Stephanie, at this time, I want to hand the microphone over to you as moderator for our public address portion of the meeting.
Thank you, mayor. Good morning, and thank you for signing up, those that did, to speak at public address today. Before we begin, I'd like to cover a few ground rules. When it is your turn to speak, you may speak on, for, or against any item on the agenda. You cannot provide public address to items not on today's agenda. City council welcomes your comments today, but please refrain from using foul language or making any disparaging comments or personal attacks. Doing so may cause you to lose the remainder of your public address time. Because we have over 10 people signed up this morning for public address, and we'd like to hear from as many as possible, we are allocating two minutes to each person that will be speaking. When your two minutes conclude, I will thank you for your comments, and we will move to the next person. As a reminder, if you ask questions during your comments, please note that counsel may defer to answer these until the item on the agenda is considered. So we will start through our list of public address people. Now, we have several signed up. I will let you know when it's your turn and when you're on deck. First, we have Mr. Marcus Rogers, and I am not seeing that Marcus is on here right now. So, Mr. Rogers, if you're on here, if you'll please press star nine on your telephone or click your raise hand button to let me know that you are with us. On deck will be Claudette Smith.
We are back to the 30-minute timeframe for public address today. As a total.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we set that right up.
Let's go ahead and go with Claudette Smith, and after her will be Mike Fisher. So, Ms. Smith, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments when you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay. In my opinion, this ordinance exceeds the city's lawful authority and creates potentially dangerous situations for enforcement. Therefore, I have reported this to the Texas Attorney General for further review. We already know that lockdowns and masks don't stop the spread of the virus. However, we do know that they destroy small businesses, jobs, and the overall economy, and they make it difficult for families to put food on the table. As leaders, we should not be forcing citizens to enforce wearing masks or forcing our business owners to sit themselves against their customers. Rather, we should be providing our citizens with all the information we have about COVID so that they can make decisions that are right for them, their businesses, and their families. And Ginger, this might be a hard pill for you to swallow here, but you cannot possibly know what is best for the 200,000 people in this city. I think Prop 8's failure is a fine example of that. What you can do is listen to the people and vote based on the general consensus. The general consensus on Friday was against this ordinance, yet I have sat through hundreds of council meetings where I've witnessed this happen each and every time, and all of you still vote for something that the general consensus is against. We are not children, and this is not some kindergarten class. You do not know what is best for the people. The people know what is best for the people. As a strong conservative myself, the way I see it, the less government we have, the better off we are. We do not need our local government stepping in and telling us how to protect our own health, and we certainly do not need our local government overstepping their boundaries by regulating our local businesses out of business. With that said, I ask this mayor and council to stay in your own lane and stick to doing what you are elected to do, which is to represent we, the people. After all, we, the people, know what is best for us, not the government. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Smith. Next up, we'll have Mike Fisher. On deck after Mike Fisher will be Ricky with the phone number ending in 2611. Mr. Fisher, you should be able to unmute yourself and provide your comments at this time. Try to unmute yourself on your phone, Mr. Fisher.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can. We're ready for your comments.
Okay. I'd just like to let you know, this post is about, I mean, my comment is about this particular meeting, and I'll need to say my whole statement here to prove that, but if you guys cut me off, so be it. If you think for one minute this council cares about citizens with COVID, just ask yourself, what's more important than children? This council, every single one of you gave a block grant to a youth center run by a man that was arrested just 10 days ago for indecency with a child by sexual contact. You gave this man a grant after you were warned of his history, where each of you were given news articles of his past criminal conduct involving minors and copies of his Facebook messages of him sending explicit messages to minors. Ginger Nelson recommended this man to be approved to serve on an animal control board where the board meetings were held at his youth center. Just a few weeks ago, this council had this man at a council meeting where they approved for him to be the coordinator of a cleanup involving AIST in all the elementary schools along with their students. Been thinking about this when Ginger Nelson plays the Jesus card and pretends to get emotional when she talks of caring for this city and the welfare of people suffering from COVID. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, thank you for your comments. At this time, we have Ricky, phone number ending in 2611, and I do not see Ricky on here, so if you are, sir, please raise your hand or press star nine. After Ricky will be Jimmy, phone number ending 0749. Jimmy, if you're here, please do the same. Press star nine or click raise hand. If not, we will move to Cheryl Cooper next. Ms. Cooper is on here. And on deck after Ms. Cooper will be Kit Rudd. Kit Rudd, if you're on here, please press star nine so that we know that you're here. Ms. Cooper, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments at this time. Ms. Cooper, you may need to unmute yourself on your telephone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, can you hear me? Okay, I'm sorry. You said, "which star nine," and it's star six. Okay, I'm ready. I am firmly against this ordinance as it shows utter contempt for the citizens of Amarillo, particularly the business owners. What started out in March as guidelines when the federal coronavirus task force morgued into unlawful mandates, and now this punitive divisive ordinance. These federal guidelines turned out to be highly unscientific and harmful in a plethora of ways. In addition, it has never been proven scientifically by the CDC's own reports that asymptomatic people are contagious or carry disease. The PCR test was never designed for diagnostics. In fact, right on the test kit itself, it states how inconclusive the results can be. Recently, the Portuguese court ruled that the PCR tests are unreliable and unlawful to quarantine people based on their results. Dr. Mike Yedon, the former chief scientific advisor for Pfizer, reported that almost all the tests for COVID, upwards of 80%, are false positive and being misused to gin up this false second wave. I have links to all these articles if you all are interested. Nevertheless, all this is being done in the so-called name of safety and supposedly stopping the spread, which according to the government's own findings has a survival rate of 99.5% in ages 0 to 69, and 94.6% in survival rate in ages 70 and above. Sadly, not a single doctor or nurse who spoke on Friday said a word about survivability or recovery or offered remedies to support the body's own immune system. No, it is just wear the mask, which does the exact opposite. It bears repeating. No business or store policy may violate federal and state civil rights law, which allows specifically for exemption. To discriminate against those with a medical or religious exemption is against the law. It is unconstitutional, and it leaves the discriminator liable for lawsuits. You are putting people in a very bad position. Again, I say, since the government's authority comes only from the consent of the governed, and that's us, we do not and will not consent to this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we will move to Kit Rudd. So, Mr. Rudd, if you are on, please press star nine on your telephone or press the raise hand button through your Zoom app. After Mr. Rudd will be Patty Sneederjohn. I do not see that Mr. Rudd is here, so Ms. Sneederjohn, you should be able to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You can start your comments when you're ready.
Okay, I 100% agree with what Claudette said and with what Cheryl Cooper said. I do not consent or agree to this mask ordinance as a small business owner. This is going to affect all of us in many, many ways. We should not have to force somebody to do something that is against their will, their medical exemptions, their religious beliefs, and I feel like people are taking advantage of their powers. And if you guys care about our city, then you're not going to do this to our small businesses, small or large businesses. We have to survive, and we've already been hurt enough since March. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we'll move to Colin Cummins, and after Colin, we'll have Steve Pear on deck. Colin, you should be able to unmute yourself at this time, either by pressing unmute on your phone or pressing star six. Mr. Cummins, if you can hear us, go ahead and unmute yourself and start your comments at this time. There we go. I believe we can hear you now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is my first time to do that. So I will speak not for the people of Amarillo, but for myself and my fellow owners at Yellow City Street Food. As a small business owner here locally, we've obviously been impacted by the pandemic and the impacts that it's had on people's health and their concern about... Are you hearing me right now? I'm sorry.
Yes, we are hearing you. Please continue.
Okay, I appreciate it. So one thing that I can say also as a consumer is, you know, I have a lot of concern for my own health going out into the community, and if I go into a shop and see that half the folks there are wearing, are not wearing a mask, then I'm not going to come back because I know that the mask, when others wear it, is protective for me, not necessarily my mask protecting me from a bunch of people breathing all over the place. So I'm supportive of this ordinance because the city hasn't been all that proactive in containing spread. I'm not a conspiracy theorist, so I do believe that they work because they've been shown to work, and I've read plenty of articles that indicate such. The problem is, is we just need greater compliance. So I'm happy with compliance. Our business has complied with governor's orders since masks were mandated, and we continue to do such, and we're happy to bear the responsibility for doing that if it helps to slow the spread in Amarillo and make this a safer place. And I have plenty of friends who agree, and hopefully you'll be receiving emails from them today. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Next, we have Steve Pear. Steve, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak at this time.
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you great.
Good morning. First, I just wanted to thank you all for your service and for all you do for our community. I also wanted to voice my support for the passage of this ordinance. One of the things that makes Amarillo and the Panhandle such a special place is how we come together and help our friends, family, and neighbors when times get tough, and we are certainly in one of those rough patches now. Our healthcare community needs our help. They are asking the public to help, and now they've made a direct plea to you all for your help via a petition with around 1,000 names on it. They are the ones putting their lives on the line to keep us safe and to keep us alive. I see no reason why we don't do everything possible to give them the support they're asking for. There are numerous research studies that show wearing masks helps slow the spread of this virus. We simply need more compliance. This is not a political issue. This is an issue of compassion, and I hope that you will all vote to keep with our long tradition of helping our friends and families and neighbors during tough times like this. Again, I thank you all for your time and hope you'll vote for this ordinance again today.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we will move to William Biggs. Mr. Biggs, I do not see you on here, so if you will press star nine or click your raise hand button so that I know you're here. Oh, there we go. Okay. William Biggs, on deck will be Josh Knapp.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
Thank you. You know, I'm William Biggs. I'm the general, I'm the managing partner of Amarillo Medical Specialists. We have 46 doctors, nurse practitioners, and physician assistants, and I wanted to point out really that lives are in the balance of the decision you make today. Our primary care doctors are seeing an unrelenting explosion in numbers of patients coming to us in the outpatient setting who are ill from COVID. In previous weeks, we used to think five or six, seven cases a day was a high number. Last Monday, we diagnosed 31 new cases. We've had over 100 cases for the last two weeks on a weekly total. This is going from bad to worse. Many of these people are going to need hospital and ICU beds one or two, three weeks down the line, and those ICU beds may not be available. We specialize in patients who have elderly and chronic health conditions. Many of these patients will die or suffer from severe disability from this infection. Wearing face masks has been repeatedly shown to reduce community spread. The viral loads from this disease are highest just before the symptoms start, early in the course of the disease. And until we have a vaccine, masking is going to be one of our best and most innocuous tools to reduce transmission. I would implore you, pass whatever regulations are legally possible to enforce masking. You know, we take care all day of sick people, being as careful as we can be to prevent spread within our offices, spread between patients. We personally wear masks all day. I can't tell you how discouraging it is to go shopping for food or essential supplies and see dozens of people without masks who are coughing or talking on their cell phones. You know, if the current conditions continue, the next few months are going to be extremely difficult. This is perhaps going to be the darkest hour in our history as a community. We can do better, but it's going to really require pulling all of Amarillo together. Now, I realize that this decision is going to have some political costs. Obviously, not everybody's going to agree, but the decision to enforce masks is supported by the science and the best data available. We must get Amarillo through these next few months and minimize the harm to our community. So I pray that you have the strength to pass this ordinance, to mandate masking, and that the Amarillo community will have the wisdom to understand that need, and I wish that we all can come through this well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we'll have Josh Knapp, and after Mr. Knapp, Michael Ford will be on deck. Josh Knapp, you should be able to unmute yourself and provide your comments at this time.
Thank you. Before I give a statement, I have two questions I'd like the council to answer. Question one is, other cities in Texas who have this ordinance do not have fines as high as Amarillo's? So why is the fine so high? And then question two is, is unclear at this time what happens if a business can't afford to pay the fine. This is a $2,000 per day fine. I understand that first you'll teach the owner, then you'll cite the owner, then you'll fine the owner, but I'm curious what step four is if the owner cannot pay or refuses to pay. So if you can answer those two questions for me. As far as the statement, first, I just, I really appreciate you guys. I understand the gravity of the situation, and I don't envy your position. It's very difficult. As y'all know, I'm not for the ordinance. However, I am for anything that we can do to slow the spread of COVID, and I am for anything that any person can do to help in any way. One thing that I am curious about too is, I feel like that, I know you guys have been meeting, but I feel like as a business owner, I have not been approached or asked as a business to truly partner with the city in helping compliance. I feel like this is more of just a, if you don't comply, you're going to be fined situation. I think Dr. Milton had a fantastic idea on Friday when he was talking about the antibiotics issue. They didn't fine doctors for noncompliance. They simply just asked if doctors would help with complying and reducing prescribing antibiotics, and through that, they received a 25% reduction on antibiotics prescribed. So my heart is for you guys to just first, the first step, launch a campaign, do signs, do, provide them to business owners. You can come, you can pick them up from the city, no charge to you, that say, hey, we are going to comply. We are all in this together. And just see what the response is, because I think it would be overwhelming. And then, you know, if that's not enough, then maybe seek the next step. And I see some of you are shaking your heads, but I feel like that if we first ask, we have an amazing community and people want to help. They really do. But they really don't like being hit over the head with this kind of interference and forced mandates. So I appreciate you. I appreciate your time. Thank you, guys. I am praying for you, and I'm praying for Amarillo and the sick folks here. Thank you so much.
Mr. Knapp, thank you for your comments. Next, we'll move on to Mr. Michael Ford. After Mr. Ford, Tulke Persons will be on deck. Michael Ford, you should be able to unmute yourself and give your comments at this time.
Hello, just a parliamentary inquiry at the beginning here. I did not hear anything in regard to what version of this ordinance we're looking at or reviewing, that the actual hearing was opened by the chair or anything of that matter. We just started talking, and so I don't have a clue, and we've not seen another version of this, although another version was approved. I sent the council, and so I don't think that question will be answered. My questions are never answered, but we sent the council, I sent the council a seven-page letter. Hopefully, you had a chance to read that. It's been very difficult to compile the data that's necessary to demonstrate that masks, whether regardless of the country where you have a policy of masks or no masks, or the state of the United States, whether you have a policy of masks or no masks, has any effect on the case increase in the northern hemisphere. You can look across the entire northern hemisphere, and regardless of the policy across the entire northern hemisphere, cases are exploding. So that's not, the issue of not wearing a mask or wearing a mask is certainly not the case. If you actually look at the OSHA's website, where they list various types of masks, cloth face coverings, and for surgical masks, cloth face coverings will not protect the wearer against airborne transmissible infectious agents due to low fit and lack of seal or inadequate filtration. I've trained people in respiratory protection in nuclear environments and in for nuclear chemical biological warfare responses. I've done that for 35 years. There has never been, ever been, a conclusive study that's shown a cloth face mask will save, protect people from infectious diseases. This is completely false, and it's harming the public. And the physicians that we're talking to, they have not done these studies, and they have not done this work. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ford, we thank you for your comments. Your time is up. Next, we'll move on to Tulke Persons. After that, Randy with the phone number ending in 5808 will be on deck. Mr. Persons, you should be able to unmute and give your comments at this time.
Mayor, council members, good morning, and thank you for your service. I encourage you to pass this ordinance. It's imperative for the health and safety of our community. The fact is, it's disappointing that you're having to take this measure, and not all of my fellow citizens are willing to take even the most basic measures to reduce the spread of this virus. It's disappointing that so many businesses are unwilling to enforce the governor's mandate. I would suggest that contrary to statements made by some of today's speakers and Councilwoman Hayes, that this mandate and your proposed enforcement measures are not some outrageous government overreach. They are no different than other laws already on the books. For example, businesses are issued occupancy limits. A business has to choose to enforce those limits or they suffer the penalty. Businesses that sell alcohol are required to ensure underage people are not drinking or they will suffer the consequences. Requiring a business to enforce a rule on their customers or clientele is not a new concept. Requiring businesses to enforce this mask mandate is no different. This is not a debate about liberty or freedom. This is a debate about leadership, and I am asking today that you act as leaders and pass this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next will be Randy, and then our last speaker after Randy will be Reg Martin. Randy, you should be able to unmute yourself and give your comments at this time.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. But giving business owners this authority, you're damaging the very freedom you are supposed to be protecting. The government was established to lead a free people, not to place restrictions on the freedom of our fathers fought to preserve. We as God's creation have God's law written upon our hearts, and the golden rule is still in effect. Yes, protect and serve the people, but do so within the confines of freedom. I voted for you, Ginger, and I never elected you to take away my rights, nor did the people. We have rights and freedoms to live as free people, and I emphasize the free. We as American, America, land of the free, or we say we are America, land of the free and home of the brave, but yet a virus has completely overthrown our supposed bravery. America was founded on these principles. Thomas Jefferson argued that the people have the right to overthrow their government when it abuses the fundamental natural right over a long period of time. when it abuses the fundamental natural right over a long period of time. Is this a pattern that you will continue to follow like the lawless left Democratic Party continues to push? John Locke was one of these that believed that the people should be free to make choices about how to conduct their own lives, as long as they do not interfere with the liberty of others. Locke therefore believed liberty should be far-reaching. Locke also wrote that all individuals are equal in a sense that they are born with a cer- certain inalienable natural right, and it is God-given, uh, can never be taken away. Uh, among these fundamental natural rights, Locke said are life, liberty, and property. Property meant, uh, was the ownership of oneself, uh, not only, uh, physical property. I urge you to remember who is in power over their own body, because the very thing you do to us now will one day come at your own expense potentially. In conclusion, unfortunately, it does not matter if masks may or may not work, but this is within, uh, this is not within the confines of your reach to place restrictions on we, the people, because when we, the people, have the rights, you as the government, need to learn to keep your hands to yourself. You treat us like children, but refuse to grow up yourself. Only one of you had the backbone and tenacity to stand up for freedom. Your, your supposed love has blinded you, and for that, I'm sorry, but if you continue down this road, you're, uh, you are unfit to rule. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our last speaker signed up for today is Reg Martin. Mr. Martin, you are able to unmute yourself and give your comments at this time.
Hello, this is, uh, Dr. Reg Martin. I am a practicing anesthesiologist in Amarillo since 2007. I currently serve as the medical director at, uh, Quail Creek Surgical Hospital, and I'm also on the board of Physician Surgical Hospital. My comments are very simple. Um, currently, we as a community are seeing a massive, uh, increase in positive rates for COVID. We're also seeing community resources for acute services, emergent services, uh, totally, uh, being utilized beyond capacity. Right now, the, uh, every ICU bed at BSA is occupied, every ventilator is occupied, and every one of the people that are on this call and listening to this call will either know somebody or will be themselves in need of some sort of urgent medical care in the next month or two. And what I can tell you is, if any of you folks want to see your ability to have access to those emergency services in a timely fashion, you will vote for this, simply because mask wearing has been shown categorically in study after study to decrease the spread of airborne illnesses, whether it be influenza, coronavirus, or any of the respiratory viruses out there. It has been categorically been shown to, to decrease that. Even, not even a surgical-grade mask will improve, uh, containment of this. So i- in summary, if you want to see the ICUs decompress and your ability to see your loved ones taken care of in a timely fashion after a terrible car accident, or a appendicitis that may result in a septic situation, routine things that happen every single day in this community, you better vote for this, because, let me tell you, if, if you don't have somewhere to go with that person, and times of the essence, maybe on, maybe on a, a helicopter or air flight to another facility, um, where, again, you won't be able to have as much information about the healthcare providers and the resources in that community. So we've got to take care of this as a community. Wearing a mask is the one and only way you can do something as an individual, a selfless individual, to affect this change.
Mr. Martin, thank you for your comments, and at this time, mayor, public address is concluded, and I would turn it back over to you.
City manager, I would like at this time for the city attorney to answer a couple of the questions that were posed, and if he could start by just talking about the genesis of this ordinance and how it's related to state law, and try to clear up some confusion about the transfer of enforcement. Would you just have him speak to that?
Absolutely. Um, be glad to, uh, address that. Um, the enforceability question, this, this is not a transfer of enforcement at all. Uh, in fact, um, yeah, I, I assume that we're discussing GA 29, which is the mask mandate. Um, that, that, that enforcement related to it has to do with police officers, individual mandate on each person. That's, that's what they're talking about enforcement. This has nothing to do with GA 29 in that regard at all. Um, this, this ordinance gets its origins from state law, existing state law, state law that has been on the books for decades. Um, and in, it, 341 of the Health and Safety Code talks about, um, uh, nuisances in such a way that no person, it prohibits, um, harboring of a place or condition where a probable medium of disease transmission can occur. The standards that you have in this particular ordinance, um, are in place because of the CDC guidelines that have been, have been incorporated into every order, um, both at the national level and the state level throughout the United States, by health districts, by local authorities, by cities, by counties, to try to minimize, um, the, the transmission of this highly communicable disease that we know under Health and Safety Code, Chapter 81, is just that. And thus, the CDC measures that are incorporated into this ordinance are the CDC measures that we've been, have, that all persons have been asked to follow now for months, uh, based upon, uh, their, their ability to effectively minimize the transmission rate. So I want to make sure that everyone understands, this is not an executive order or a take on an executive order about enforceability of a mask. This has nothing to do with that. This is state law that, like I said, has been on the books, um, for decades, and all this ordinance does is put those measurable standards in place so that, um, uh, we can minimize transmission, uh, through a local ordinance. I hope that answers the question.
Brian, would you speak directly to the fines? How did we arrive at the amount of fines in this ordinance?
Great question, mayor. Um, first of all, under Chapter 54.004, the Local Government Code, a home rule municipality can adopt any rules necessary to protect health, life, property, government. In that particular provision, any kind of fine that goes to a health and safety matter cannot exceed $2,000 per state law. So that's where that came from. Um, I will also add that our ordinance mirrors vision of the Local Government Code, like many cities do. Uh, many cities have the exact same provision in their code as well. So that's where the $2,000 fine came from. Of course, this council is, is free to lower that fine to whatever they want. Um, that just sets the maximum amount.
And who decides the fine? It's not, it's my understanding, it's not the environmental health officer on the site, but it's set by a judge when the case goes to trial. Is that correct?
You're absolutely correct. Uh, in every instance, um, in this ordinance, if you were to be fined for a violation of this ordinance, you would get your day in court, and that particular fine would be set, depending on whether you had a bench trial or a jury trial, it would be set by the court.
And that, I mean, they already could do that right now under state law, but one of the reasons we're doing this ordinance is we're, we have the, we have the law in state law, and it's been there for a long time. What we're trying to do with the city ordinance is to mirror what's there in state law so that we can administer this more quickly in city court versus having to be in the state court system, and, and hopefully move any of these cases along faster. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
I think that is the goal. That is the goal of the ordinance. It's, it's, it's to establish those standards, uh, within the bounds of existing state law so that we can manage that enforcement, um, uh, parameter.
Are we asking citizens to issue tickets?
No, ma'am.
Are we asking business owners to cite people for violating it?
Absolutely not.
Um, I think there's a difference in requiring masks in your building versus enforcing masks in your building. And what does the ordinance, what does the ordinance state? Does it state that business owners will enforce masks, or that business owners will require? And I'm using masks, but...
It says business owners should requ- should, should require, shall require is what it says, shall require sign, or masks. That's what it says.
And Brian, there was a question too about what happens if a, a citizen can't pay? That's, that's the same as to, when they can't pay a traffic ticket, or all of those. This is not different than any other city ordinance violation that they receive a citation for, but I'll, I'll let you answer. What happens when a citizen, if a citizen were to receive a, a violation and go to court, receive a fine from the judge, and they can't pay?
In that particular case, there would be a discussion between that person and the court. The court would make a determination as to their ability to pay, and would, and has numerous, numerous options in which to, um, defer that payment, put them on a payment plan, uh, have community service. There's all sorts of options that are possibilities depending upon that ability to pay.
Council, do you have any questions for the city attorney?
Okay, at this time then, I would entertain a motion on Ordinance 7893.
Uh, mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7893.
Second.
I'll second it by Councilmember Sauer to approve ordinance 7893. At this time, we will enter into discussion and questions, um, from each of the council members. Given that we did extensive discussion on Friday afternoon in a four-hour meeting, four hours plus, uh, I just want to start today, and we'll just start with place one and move through place four. Each of you can make your comments, ask any questions at that time, and then when you're finished, we'll call the question. So we'll start with place one and Councilmember Hayes.
Thank you, mayor. And, um, I just wanted to respond to one of, one of the comments, and just having served with you guys for the last three and a half years, I know your heart. I know that, um, even when we have disagreements, that you love the city, you love the people of the city, and, and you are trying to, we're all trying to make the best decisions that we possibly can. Um, Eddie, I loved what your daughter had written and posted on Facebook, and I thought, um, you know, for our kids to get us, to understand us and our heart and be able to communicate it, I thought, what a treasure. I thought that was just very touching and very sweet. Um, and so now just addressing, um, this specific ordinance and where we are today, um, you know, the goal of this ordinance, this particular method, is to increase compliance in the belief that, and hope that it would lower cases and reduce the strain on our current hospitalization capacity. That's how we, how we have ended up today. And the first step in increasing compliance is to raise awareness, and I would say that at, that has absolutely been accomplished with our conversations over this last week. And I know we've, we've been dealing with this for many months, but I believe that we have the attention of our city in a way we have not had in the past. I've had so many people send me notes that they watched the entire four hours. You guys have probably gotten those messages as well, whi- which shocks me, and I really appreciate people's investment in this process. Um, so just, again, kudos to our community for really weighing in, listening, and being engaged. Um, the second is, I think that the video that the hospitals put out is, is very, very compelling, very effective. It raises that awareness of what's going on in our city, and these, they're real people. They're our people. They're, they're our community, and I think that is also very helpful in, in raising this awareness. And then, you know, as we addressed at the beginning of this meeting, we have lost some people in our community that have some very, that had some very far-reaching impact. Every loss impacts your own family so deeply, and there've just been some individuals in our community that their life reached so far their circles, um, that they were the kind of people that inspire us to want to be better people and to be remembered positively at the end of our lives. And I think all, all those things have gotten our city's attention, which was step one. I think the bottom line with the, really, the healthcare community is wanting is help in raising compliance, and you don't get there without raising awareness, and that has absolutely happened in, in the last 10 days. And so now we're at a position, we're at a crossroads. We have their attention. Do we want to use a carrot or a stick in trying to get cooperation from our community? And at the end of the day, it, it is true, you, you can't govern without the consent of the governed. And my concern at this point is that if we take the stick approach, we are a- actually possibly increasing resistance to the mask as opposed to bringing people in out of a need and a concern of what's happening currently right now with, with our cases and with our, uh, just our hospital capacity. So I just want to say, I support wearing a mask. It's the law, and I'm going to follow the law. Number two, I support our healthcare workers, and, and I hear them. I hear what they're going through. But I feel that this particular ordinance misdirects through a punitive method, trying to get our business owners to police their customers that are coming in. You know, I'm not worried about the large businesses in our community. Uh, when you look at just, you know, I know Amazon's not exactly in our community, their profits are up 100%. Walmart is up 80%, Target's up 80%, Lowe's is up 74% in their profits. Small businesses, 21% of them have closed. Of the ones who have, I mean, that, that's a quarter of that entire industry. Out of those that have remained, their revenues are down 30%. And so right now, we meet, we need some immediate response. There, you know, we talked last Friday, there are some things that are, uh, intermediate, long-term things that I think we, we as a council and as a, a community need to be doing. We need some immediate things right now, some immediate help, and that's with our business owners, engaging, encouraging customers, and then, secondly, with our community, to be taking extra precautions over these next few weeks. I think that it is, I know we have asked in the past, I'm not sure everybody was paying attention. I think that we can accomplish exactly what the healthcare community is asking of us without putting this extra punitive burden on our small business owners, and I greatly appreciate all you guys and, um, listening to my comments.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Powell at place two.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I just have a couple of comments to make as well, and I just wanted to say, um, our city's healthcare system is, is on the very brink, as we've already heard this morning from our medical professionals. We are advised by our hospitals that they are dangerously close to, uh, not being able to take care of any one of us, whether we have, you know, a heart attack, a stroke, a inju- injury, or maybe even COVID-19. Uh, I do believe with all my heart that we, as a city council, we are called to lead in this particular situation, maybe more so than any situation that, uh, that we've ever faced. I- if we don't do all that we can to, to limit the spread of this deadly virus, I believe that we're letting down the citizens of our community. We, we have encouraged people, um, we have pleaded with people, we begged people, and, and still, everywhere you go, there are people not wearing masks, and, and absolutely, that is their choice. Um, we have already lost more than 250 people. Um, uh, these are our Amarillo friends, these are our neighbors. We've lost them to COVID-19. Wearing a mask, to me, just seems like a, a small price to pay to prevent more deaths and to give our healthcare workers a break from the dreadful situation that they are currently facing. I too, in, in my own industry, because I, I work in the last responders industry every day, you know, just this weekend, you know, we have lost one of our own. And, and it, it is tough, because I'm seeing it every day, but as I listen to our healthcare workers, I, I know it's time for us to step up and, and lead. And again, I just offer up my deepest sympathy and condolences to, uh, the family of Judge , uh, Hattishell, and, and their family, and I will continue... and their family, and I will continue to pray for them. Thank you.
Place three, Councilman Eddie Sauer.
Thank you, Mayor. This is probably one of the toughest decisions that I've ever had a part of. The last thing that I want to do is put something more on our small businesses. I think it's real important, they're the life of our community. They're they're who we look to for stability in our town. And they're so very important. At the same time, I look at the healthcare community and I have lots of friends that are in the healthcare community. And I see how they're being ravaged and the things that are going on. I think it's kind of interesting and it kind of sways my position is the mayor declared March 18th, the declaration of disaster. Five days after the governor declared a declaration of disaster. Little did we know how big of a crisis that that actually ends up becoming. And I think that's the mindset that I'm looking through at this current time is that we're in the middle of a crisis. We're in the middle of a crisis and we have to do something. I so appreciate Elaine's comments about the fact that we needed a wake-up call on this last 10 days, has been a wake-up call. I think it has been a wake-up call. And I am so in favor of if we could just do a wake-up call and that be all that it takes. The problem that I see personally with this is we can't wait to see if the wake-up call alone works. We've got to have help and we've got to get help however we can get that help. And I think this is with the way that it's set up through state statutes and we're just confirming state statutes. And actually, it doesn't have to be punitive on businesses at all. And that's the thing that I keep seeing over and over and over again, listening to Anthony Spinell speak and the way that they're going to handle this is there's no intention for punitive damages to be laid on the community. It's just, we're in a desperate time and we need desperate help. And we have to ask each one of us to do more. And so I see this as a critical, critical crossroad. You know, I had a patient in this morning who relates to me with, I didn't ask him any questions. They're just telling me one of their employees had a problem with their gallbladder. And they, it ends up it's bad enough that they call the ambulance. The ambulance comes and gets them, takes them to the hospital. They have to wait in the emergency room. So by the time they finally get to the point because of no rooms, no help, a decrease in accessibility to care because of what COVID's going on, it's 12 hours before this particular person ends up having surgery. And it turns out that typically when you do gallbladder surgery, it's pretty quick. It doesn't have to be invasive. When they made the initial incisions, they found out, oh my gosh, the gallbladder had actually ruptured. And so now then it becomes a full-blown procedure. And now then she's got an extensive stay in the hospital. And now then there's an extensive amount of rehabilitation that will be down the road. So these are the first signs of what's going on. And so it's a crisis. It is a crisis and I just feel like that we we have to step up in the time of the crisis.
Thank you. Place four, Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a long talk. I'll be quick. But I'd say I agree with A. Sauer. This has been pretty tough. I've talked to a whole lot of people on the phone. And I couldn't get to some of them, just time crunch. And I'm sorry if I didn't. I've had a lot of emails, tons of emails. And talking to people and getting emails, a bunch are for, a bunch are against this. My personal opinion really hasn't changed from Friday. I just feel like that that every person on the council, we've been on the council three and a half years. And we each have a right to vote our own conscience. And that's, and that's fine. I respect the right for each council member to do that. But I just feel like we've got an emergency. We need to deal with it. We need to do something. And what we've been doing hasn't, hasn't worked. Someone said to me this morning, well, we got vaccine very close. And we may have, looking at national news, we may have something in three weeks or a month. But that's not going to be to everybody. It may take months to get around once we have the vaccine out there. So I think we just need to do something now. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you.
I would agree with Councilman Sauer that this is a crisis. And it needs immediate action from us. And as a city, as city staff for sure, we've been having weekly press conferences, sometimes more than weekly. I know that we have handed out signs since the end of March. Signs have been available. We've been on a long, an eight-month campaign trying to get people's attention. And I'm quite surprised by just moving a little bit toward this discussion, how much attention we've gotten from citizens. And I'm grateful, I'm grateful for that because all we really want is for people to know that the problem is real and know that it's dire. We were having, the story that Eddie told just gives me chills to think that someone can't get basic good medical care in our community. And what it's going to cost this person to recover from that is so much different than if we had been able to treat her quickly. So for me, this is all about helping our hospitals. And inside our hospitals, that's about helping our medical workers who've been working hard for the last eight months. But it's also about helping people outside the hospital. We don't even know who that is yet. It might be you, might be me, might be somebody in our family. Who's the next gallbladder case who's not going to get the surgery they need in time? Those are my concerns. It is a difficult thing to ask our businesses to do more than they've been doing. But when you read through the minimum standards of this ordinance, these are all measurable things. They're all very doable things. We're just asking that you post a sign at your business. We're asking that you ask people to wear a mask. We're not asking you to enforce anything. We're not asking you to forcefully put a mask on someone's face. That would be ridiculous. But have you made it a priority for your employees to be wearing masks? For the signage in your store to clearly communicate that masks are required? And then have you asked your customers to wear a mask and even provided a mask for them? Those are the measurable things required by this statute. And that's what we're asking for. I also think it's good to distinguish that there's a state statute already in place. And all we're doing is mirroring that statute and making it also a city ordinance. So I know there's been a lot of conversation and some headlines and things about what this new city ordinance does. It comes right out of that state statute, mirrors the language and just creates a sister statute inside our city ordinances that does what the state statute already did. So I think we've gotten some attention off of some information that's not exactly accurate. But now that we have everyone's attention, what we want to ask you to do is to help us as a city, to respond in love to each other, to pull together, not to fight against each other, not to be divided, but to help our businesses, help them. I hope they don't even have to ask one person to put on a mask because every single one of us sees the need and responds in compassion and says, I will gladly wear a mask for just a little while until our city is through this crisis. And that will benefit our hospital workers and it will lower the population in our hospital so that each of us will have access to medical care if we need it. This really is all about helping our hospitals. There was some conversation on the dais last week that this ordinance might be unconstitutional or that it might be potentially illegal. And I would like to ask the city attorney to address that. And I just want to say to our council members that I think we need to be really, really careful about the words that we're choosing right now. Words bring the power of life and death. And our words as leaders have even more effect on our community. We have to be very careful about using rhetoric, even when we feel strongly about an issue. We must stick to the facts. And so I'd like for the city attorney to address right now the facts on whether or not this ordinance is unconstitutional and whether or not it's potentially illegal. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is completely and utterly constitutional and legal. It has been utilized, this particular ordinance could have been utilized for decades before this pandemic in the same manner and means to effectuate and to keep a possible condition from happening, having to do with disease. In other words, it's being utilized exactly as the legislature intended it to be utilized for a locality. And so there is no doubt in my mind, none, that this is constitutional and it is completely legal and within the bounds of a home rule city's powers.
Thank you.
I just think it's very important for us to stay in the facts on that. And I agree, this is a time of crisis in our city. I guess if you were going to simplify it and make an analogy out of it, our city's on fire. And there are folks that think the best approach is to sit and wait for it to rain in order to put the fire out. And I think we need to be grabbing a bucket. And I'm asking every citizen in Amarillo if they would please grab a bucket and help us put out the fire in our city. Help our hospital workers. Help our hospital's population to decrease. So the city has put out posters. If you need a poster, please contact publiccommunications@amarillo.gov. There'll be more information there if this ordinance passes today. We're just asking for your help, businesses. We so appreciate you and we appreciate the efforts you're going to make in order to help us fight this fire that's in our city. So at this time then, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All of those in favor of the motion for Ordinance 7893, please raise your hand. I see four votes for it.
Mayor, were they not going to see any other comments after you called for the vote? Would you give me an opportunity to respond?
We're voting. Are you against or for the motion?
You're not going to give me an opportunity to say anything?
You had an opportunity to say something.
Five of us had an equal opportunity to say something. Do you want to cast your vote or refrain from voting?
I think the ordinance will be ineffective. It's going to be unenforceable. It's going to be more divisive than we have already been.
Yes or no for the ordinance, please?
I am opposed to the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
All of you, and at this time, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.